Calling to order the Monday, January 8th, 2024, meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Protam Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Valani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Mayor Protam Gavin. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've now come to the portion of the meeting where you may present your thoughts on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. We will look impassive. It doesn't mean we don't care. We do. We just won't engage. Please refrain from cheering, booing, clapping. Please direct your comments to the chair. You have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. If your concern needs to be followed up by a member of city staff or department, there's a table right outside this door where you can leave your contact information, and please do that if you would like someone to get back with you.
My name is Barb Lathrop, and I live in Berkeley, Michigan. And I know how liquor licenses are run, but I'm wondering how vape stores are run, how it's approved. We have a vape store that is opening at the end of our street, and I'm not really thrilled about it because I think it kind of brings down the neighborhood. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. And please leave your contact info, and someone will get back with you on that. Thank you.
A little slow on the uptake, forgive me. Andy Meisner, I'm a Huntington Woods resident, but proud Berkeley grad and former county treasurer. Wanted to come this evening and kind of reintroduce myself and my new role as CEO of only the second new bank in Michigan in the last dozen years. Name of the bank is Community Unity Bank, or Cub. And yes, we will be Berkeley Cub sponsors, and we already are Berkeley Steeler sponsors. As the county treasurer, I was responsible for working with depositories throughout the county and know the importance from that experience of having locally-run, locally-owned financial institutions. Our focus is on small business lending, although we do offer kind of the full suite of services. And we're right up Woodward at 14 and 1/2 mile next to the Floyd Mayweather Boxing Gym. I hope to leave you with a quick top-five list of smart money management and fraud prevention ideas for financial health and wellness during the new 2024 year. Number five, make sure that you place your funds at an FDIC-insured institution, or if it's a credit union, that it is NCUAA insured. There are some online depositories that don't necessarily carry that, and if you're worried about FDIC insurance, you want to be careful to make sure that the institution you're working with has got it. There is a check fraud ring ongoing in Oakland County right now, according to the local FBI office in Troy. If you are still writing checks, like physically writing checks, the FBI advises you to use a gel pen instead of a ballpoint pen, which is harder to adulterate. Three, it's annoying, but always use multi-part authentication with all of your accounts. Two, use a password with numbers, letters, and symbols, preferably lower and uppercase, to avoid the fraudsters who are really after us, and instances of cybersecurity and fraud are rampant. As they say, it's not really paranoia if they're actually after you, and in this case, they are. And the number-one way to enjoy good financial health and wellness this year, don't click on any email or texts that you don't recognize. Sometimes, a single letter could be changed, but the number-two cause of fraud nationally is what they call business email compromise. And so 80% or 90% of the time, it's us doing the damage by clicking on the wrong link. Can learn more about us at communityunitybank, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, have we received any correspondence to be entered into the record this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have not.
Good. Okay. Last call? Closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, December 18th, 2023. Two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1394. Three, proclamation number P124. Matter proclaiming February 2024 as Black History Month.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Valani with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Black to read P0124.
Madam Mayor, counsel, it is my honor to read a proclamation of the city of Berkeley, Michigan proclaiming February 2024 as Black History Month, whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment of Negro History Week in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, and whereas it became a month-long celebration in 1976. The month of February was chosen to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, and whereas during Black History Month, we commemorate Black history and its cultural contributions to American life, and is designed to recognize and pay tribute to the many contributions of African-Americans to the history, society, and culture of the United States of America. And whereas, Black History Month grants us an opportunity to recognize and honor the heroes of African-American history and celebrates the achievements of African-Americans in the arts, civil rights, education, entertainment, government, history, law, literature, medicine, military, music, politics, science, sports, and other endeavors. And whereas, the city of Berkeley continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas, the city of Berkeley is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Now, therefore, the council of the city of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1, that February 2024 shall be recognized as Black History Month in the city of Berkeley. Section 2, the city of Berkeley also calls upon the community to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. Section 3, the city of Berkeley urges the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the city of Berkeley to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all, proclaimed this 8th day of January 2024 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number two on tonight's agenda.
Presentation. Matter of receiving a presentation by 44th District Court Chief Judge Derek Meinike and Judge Andrew Kolakowski.
Gentlemen, welcome. Happy to have you here.
Have handouts?
Yeah, we love a good handout.
My name is Judge Derek Meinike. I'm chief judge of the 44th District Court.
And I'm Andrew Kolakowski, judge at the 44th District Court.
I'm so grateful. Mayor Dean and I had had several conversations about this, but I wanted to make sure that we took the time to update city council and the community of the things that we're doing at the 44th District Court. I felt particularly motivated to do this because of my great friendship with our late friend, the Honorable Jamie Wittenberg, and it's not lost on me that we're in his former courtroom right now. But he was such a fierce supporter of Berkeley. He loved this town. He loved his community. He always made sure that the needs of Berkeley were always well-represented, and those concerns were always considered and part of the 44th District Court vision and agenda. And so upon his passing and joined with the, frankly, the excitement that Judge Kolakowski had in getting to know Berkeley better and figuring out ways that he could serve the community even better, we thought it was long overdue to come in and make sure that we do regular updates and the things that we're doing at the 44th District Court to serve the Berkeley community. So just to give you an update, obviously, this past year, 2023, was a challenge as we worked to sort of rebuild after losing our great friend and leader, Jamie. We were very fortunate, and I have to believe that Jamie did in some ways help the process that we were able to find someone who so closely mirrored so many of the priorities and goals and really principles that Jamie led his life in, the governor appointing Judge Kolakowski here, who is fully aware of Jamie's legacy and has continued to look for ways to continue that legacy. But just to give you a bit of an update over the last couple of years, leading into COVID, one of the exciting things that I'm very proud to say about our court is that we've become a real leader in making sure that our leadership in particular and our employee base as a whole is representative of our community. So just before COVID hit, in January of 2020, we appointed Tammy Bonet as our court administrator. Now, she was previously the court administrator for the Berkeley District Court, which was the 45th District Court, and when it was merged with the 44th, there was already a court administrator in place. And I'm so grateful that Tammy hung there with us and over time, again, demonstrated her quality. And I do want to make sure that this is very clear. There were some really great things that were being done with, under Judge Wittenberg's tutelage and with his leadership, that were being done on a smaller scale at the Berkeley Court. And we wondered, could we take this sort of craftsman-style approach to the way in which cases were handled and move it to this larger docket? And we have been very successful in merging those two. But add to our court administrator, Tammy Bonet, we also just recently appointed Paulina Finney as our deputy court administrator, along with Sarah Lenke, who used to be a probation officer here. She's now our chief probation officer. So we have an all-female leadership team.
Nice.
Which is fantastic, and really, again, representative of our communities and our values. And we want to encourage and support talent, you know, from all races, genders, sexual orientations, you know, wherever talent is found, we're ready and looking to promote that. I am also pleased to report that some of our programs at the 44th District Court are really at the forefront when it comes to accomplishments and recognition. So for example, Judge Wittenberg and I started a sobriety court. Actually, we had a sobriety court, and Judge Wittenberg basically doubled the size of it once he joined. And Judge K has taken on and shoulder that part of the legacy. Our sobriety court was just reported to us as of 2023. They take a look at recidivism rates. So sobriety courts are problem-solving courts. The idea is we're going to take a different approach to the most serious drug and alcohol issues. We're going to do a more intensive, more therapeutic-based type of approach to those types of offenders. And I am pleased to report, and if you feel free to take a look at the statistics, they track recidivism rates, meaning somebody who comes into our program, the way the state looks at it is, within three years of admission, have there been any new offenses? All right? Because as you can imagine, with drug and alcohol issues, that's an area of crime that is really primed for repeat behavior. Okay? So I'm happy to report that as of 2015, when Judge Wittenberg came over and we started keeping our stats on our sobriety court, our recidivism rate as of last year was zero.
Wow, that's incredible.
It was a great accomplishment.
Yes.
And that is really a credit to our entire sobriety court team. We have two fantastic sobriety court probation officers. We have multiple volunteers from the support group community, from the therapy community. It is a sight to see, and certainly would welcome anyone here to join us on a Tuesday morning or a Tuesday afternoon, depending on your schedule, just to see what we're doing in sobriety court. So just to give you sort of a landscape of what we do over at the 44th District Court, it's going to be mostly criminal cases. So if you happen to pop your head in, you're probably going to catch a criminal case because we're dealing with criminal cases three and a half, four days a week, and civil one day a week.
Right.
But I will say, one of the things that came out of COVID, which I think has increased access for community members, is we're a true hybrid court, meaning we do some things in person and some things remote. And one of the things that we take on that is remote is our one-of-a-kind Operation Drive program. Now, I know Mayor Dean and Councilmember Patterson had a chance to come see it when we invited the chief justice of the Supreme Court to come and observe, but the whole goal of that program is restoring licenses. So a lot of the cases that we deal with are traffic misdemeanors, and as you can imagine, Berkeley has several traffic arteries that go through the community. Woodward, obviously, 11 mile, 12 mile, you have, you know, a lot of people that are transporting themselves through your community. And sometimes those individuals don't have their licenses in the state that they should. All right? It used to be, and in many places still is, the court system is part of the problem. And basically, we just, over time, have set high fines and costs and not really given people the information that they need. So back in 2013, we started, this is, again, this is back when it was just Royal Oak, we started to really take a focus on why, why this is happening and how we can stop being part of the problem. And so we came up with the Operation Drive program. Jamie was a great supporter of it. And I don't know, again, this seems to be perfect. Our governor appointed someone who came from the Secretary of State. So that worked out pretty well, and so he's helped to continue that program. But I gave you the most up-to-date information as possible, but you'll see in the handouts, there are some facts about our program. I could go on and on about it because I have a real passion for it, but basically, we have somebody that comes into our court for a traffic misdemeanor. And sometimes they don't know where they need to go, what they need to do. They run into brick walls, certain places, and a lot of times, they just give up on trying to get a license. So we did pass 1,500 licenses last year. So since March of 2016, we've been keeping stats. So those are individuals who walked into our courtroom with either they're suspended, revoked, or no license at all. And we've been able to help them get their licenses restored through structure, information, all right? And that's really been the key. Structure, information, and encouragement. All right? We tell them where they need to go, what they need to do. We give them the structure. It's not one of those things where we were trying to figure out how to put bad drivers back on the road. We're trying to figure out a way for individuals who would otherwise be good drivers. And you see from their driving record, they're not getting pulled over for reckless driving, drunk driving. It's all financial-based crimes, like expired plates, defective equipment, things that people, if they could afford it, would repair. And so it's been a fantastic opportunity. And Judge Kolakowski, Judge K, we call him, Judge W, Judge K, Judge Kolakowski has been a real godsend because he's been able to share the load and has an equal, shared passion for this. But it's, again, I believe that this program fits in exactly what the Berkeley community wants. I mean, they want their leadership to be progressive, innovative, be ahead, not waiting for things to happen, making things happen. And this program is an example, and there is no program like this in the state of Michigan. The one thing I would ask is, I emailed a link to Mayor Dean. If you do get a chance to take a look at it, there is a House bill that's made its way to the Senate that has to deal with one of the last major barriers to helping people get their license. I don't have an hour and a half to explain how the unique issue works, but if you take a look at the link, you'll see my testimony in Lansing. And I'm hoping that if you have any relationships with any state senators, because it's going to be in front of the Senate, that you certainly would consider voicing your support in them voting for this bill, which could change the lives of so many in our community. Now, I'll have a few more things to talk about with Justice 101, but I know Judge K wants to talk about his teen court program.
Before you launch into that, I do want to tell counsel, I have forwarded that email with the links already. And just the time that I spent in Operation Drive, I was astounded, quite frankly, to the sheer volume of people who are struggling to get their license back, and the frustration factor, and how you have worked to remove those barriers. And it's just incredible what you're doing. So thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to piggyback off that a little bit. If you are able on Thursday to join Thursday afternoon and just watch a docket, it fills your cup.
It does.
Because all these moments of motivation, success, happiness. You know, somebody goes 13 years without a license, and they walk in and they have it, and all of a sudden, they went out and bought their first car, and now they're driving around, they have a new job, and getting their kids to school. I mean, it's just, it's life-changing for so many people on a weekly basis. And also, I just got to highlight Judge Meinike here for a second, because there's not many judges I know that have been so close to changing a law that's gotten in the way, and it's a really big deal, and it's great that he's...
Incredible.
Eight years.
Wow.
So we're...
Thanks for your persistence.
Yeah. So before I get to the program that Judge W kind of started and that I've picked up here with Teen Court, I also want to highlight the staff of the court for a minute. They went through a lot since, even when you started back at COVID. I mean, that changed everything. Judge W had monumental health challenges that the court supported him through. Visiting judges came in, and that obviously, you know, challenges staff members to continue to provide a high level of service. Then they went through their own period of grief, which I'm sure many are still in the throes of when Judge W passed away, and now transitioning to a new judge. And through all of it, I can tell you, as a community member, as a citizen of Royal Oak since 2006, as a practicing lawyer in the area that had practiced on the other side of the table for a long time in 44th District Court, it's a leader among district courts. They provide a high level of service, and it never wavered through all those challenges. It starts at the top, but it goes all the way down to every single staff member who's there, commitment to service. It's astounding. And now to be the beneficiary of that as a new judge, I just, I'm very thankful. So I want to make sure that's highlighted. The program that I was talking about, though, is the Teen Court program. Judge W started it. It's right now with Norup Middle School, and Ms. DeVito is the teacher who runs it. About once a month or so, sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less, depending on everybody's schedule, middle school students come in. We have a case that the Oakland County Prosecutor has identified as a case that a young member of the community has acknowledged their wrongdoing. Usually, it's a theft crime or something along those lines. Instead of prosecuting that individual, they go through a deferral process, and it gives the chance to these Norup students to come in and act as prosecutor, defense attorney, and the jury. And they'll make an argument on both sides, and then the jury members will decide what the ultimate punishment should be. And in between those court meetings, they're meeting on their own with Ms. DeVito, coming up with what they might think are new and innovative ways to punish and rehabilitate these community members, also practice and polish their cross-examination skills and direct-examination skills. And it's a lot of fun. It's also on Thursday afternoons, so welcome. And I'll send our schedule, and you're all welcome to come in. That one, you have to come in person because there's, you'll have to take an oath that you won't disclose anything that you've seen because these are, you know, young kids and private information that we're all sharing. But you can certainly be a part of it. So I'd encourage you to do so.
Thank you.
And then the last piece that I want to talk about today is our Justice 101 program. So Justice 101, again, I keep mentioning these programs, but there's really not, there isn't a program like this in the state of Michigan, Justice 101. It's a two-day program. So I started it back in 2013 when I first took the bench with one Royal Oak 5th grade class, and it went really well. And so then I expanded it to all of Royal Oak, and then slowly but surely, I've been able to expand it. So all of the Berkeley elementary schools, all of them that are within the city of Berkeley, obviously Burton is in Huntington Woods, and I don't want to step into other judges' turf, but I had Rogers right away. Obviously, with Judge W's help, his kids all went to Rogers, then expanded it to Angel. And then this year will be the first year that I have Patengill. So I have all, every single 5th grade student that goes to a school in the city of Berkeley will be participating in our program. And it's a two-day program. So basically, on Tuesdays, during my lunch hour, I'm in a classroom, sort of getting my teacher fix in, and I'm giving them the, sort of the lowdown on the court system. I always tell the students, we're going to do four things. We're going to talk about the court system. We're going to talk about the types of cases you're going to see, because the next day, they actually come to court and watch court.
Oh, nice.
I'm going to tell you how somebody becomes a judge, and because they're in 5th grade, I have to leave time for questions. And I have a wide, wide array of questions. Yes, I have pockets in the robe. Yes. What's the craziest case you've ever seen? I mean, it's just, they're nonstop. But what's so interesting is I continue to be amazed at the quality of students that is being prepared and produced by the Berkeley School District. It is, especially coming out of COVID, I have been so thoroughly impressed by the teachers, the principals, and most importantly, the parents and the students. Because when the students come to court, they're transported by their parents, and my Berkeley parents are usually the most participating parents. You know, I might get five or six in other classes, but I've got seven, eight, nine parents that are all signing up for the field trip, which is great. Because again, the whole idea is I want people in Berkeley to know what their court is doing for them and how, you know, we're working so hard to make sure we're meeting the high standards, and they're supposed to be high. All right? That's, I think that's where Berkeley wants to be. But I have Angel at the end of this month, so I will send out information. So if anybody wants to, has time on a Tuesday lunch hour and wants to come in and sit when I talk to the students, you'd be more than welcome. Or if you want to come on a Wednesday morning, that's my probation docket. That's when the students will come in, and you get a chance to see how they get a chance to participate as far as they watch cases, and then they have a vocab assignment. So they have to stand up and state their word and definition, and they always do fantastically well. But I'm happy to share that with all of you because it is really one of the best things that we get to do, and it's so unique and special. And again, so much of even why I'm standing here tonight is a salute to my great friend. And, you know, that's the promise that I make to him and to the entire community is that we will continue to make sure that Berkeley is a priority. I'm obviously very grateful for the relationship we have with the schools. I am overwhelmingly grateful for the relationship we have with the police department. Chief Kane is always available and accessible, along with his great wealth of experience.
And his humor.
Oh. Don't encourage that.
And again, so whatever we can do to make sure that we're available and accessible, we'll make sure that each one of you have our contact information. So if you have any questions, any way that we can help. In fact, I wanted to point out even today that we had appointed last, in 2022, a magistrate, magistrate banking who lives in Berkeley. So no matter what, we still have a judicial officer that lives in Berkeley that is part of our staff. So again, thank you for the time, and, you know, I'm very grateful to be standing where Jamie had made sure that justice was done so many times or for so many years. And we'll continue to honor it to his memory and legacy, and thank you for your support, and whatever you need, let us know.
Oh, we sure will. And thank you for being here tonight and for giving us such a robust update. And before I launch into, you know, I could be a little chatty. Does anyone from council have a question or comment for? Yes, Councilmember Valani?
So I just want to say, my daughter, Judge Meinike, went through the 5th grade program right before COVID, and she's in 9th grade now, and she and her friends still talk about that experience. And... still talk about that experience and how impactful it was to them seeing, I think they did see someone get dragged out of court, and they still, "Oh, my gosh!" But like, it, but they also saw the compassion that you exhibited. And it was just such a ama- and I was lucky enough to be one of the chaperones that day as well. So, I got to be part of that as well. But it's just such amazing work that you do at that court. And just seeing how you connect with the community at such a young age and give them that opportunity to learn that, uh, it truly is justice. It's not something to be feared. I just, I thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That's, you hit the nail on the head. That's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. Because for the most part, if you come in and watch our court, we're not in the business of villains. All right? Most people that come through the court system are our friends and neighbors who've made poor choices. And so, yes, we want to make sure that our young people understand that there are consequences to certain decisions. And I tell them, because once you turn 18, that's when you're going to be eligible for adult criminal record, adult jail. So, let's practice good decision-making now. So, then it's easy once you turn 18. But they need to know that there's a road back. Because I can't predict that their aunt or their uncle or somebody that they know, I don't want them to automatically assume that that person has done something unforgivable or they can't come back. We hold people to account. But we do so in a way that they know they can meet those standards and come out on the other side in a better position to refrain from criminal behavior in the future. And sometimes, um, at least I'd like to think, in a better position to deal with life.
Yep. Yes.
So, thank you.
Very true. Anyone else?
The-
Councilmember Black?
Judge, what have you all been able to, um, gather in, in the demographics, understanding that, um, obviously insurance rates are higher in lower-income communities, um, uninsured motorists are higher in, in lower-income communities. So, you end up with a lot of people who now have a, a, a financial burden, they get in an accident, uh, can't, can't afford to pay for a car because they got hit by an uninsured motorist. So, what are you finding in the demographics of your program, if you all track that?
Well, I will say, one of the things that, that really motivated me from the very beginning, uh, when we first, when I first started, when I first took the bench back in 2013, um, I would, and this is back when we just had Royal Oak, um, but I would walk out into the courtroom, and we'd be doing arraignments, and they'd all be traffic misdemeanors. And I would look, and I would be confronted by the reality that, that the vast majority of individuals that were sitting in my court were African-American. And I thought to myself, okay, well, we need to be part of the, the solution. Because obviously, right now, the court system's part of the problem. And so, what, you know, we try to do is look at this more as a, a, a regional issue. Um, I like to think of Royal Oak and Berkeley as, yes, we are very much about promoting our communities, but we are not islands. We are part of the metro Detroit community, and, and, and if we are who we say we are, we are looking for ways to connect with and be regional partners with, with all of our sister communities. And so, uh, we've forged relationships with different district courts in different areas. I've been to the 36th District Court in Detroit multiple times to establish relationship with those judges, because what, what I've seen to be, uh, uncovered is, you know, we, there's been great discussion over the years about, um, systemic racism present in, um, court systems and policing. And, 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 and what I want to do is get even further into the issue. And, and what it comes down to for me is, um, systemic racism when it comes to transportation. Uh, and so, even if, for example, you know, uh, individuals just stop getting pulled over for traffic misdemeanors, we still would have the fundamental, fundamental issue of them not having a license. And so, not having access to jobs that require a license. So, we've got to go, you know, we've got to get past all of the, the other noise and just get to the core issue. How can I help the individuals come before me get a license? So, um, as far as specific demographics, we don't sort of track those, those type of things. Um, but, I mean, you can come to Operation Drive, and you can look and see, um, you know, you don't have to look very hard and see, uh, uh, and, and I'd, I'd like to think again, there are other courts, and it's sad to say, that continue to be part of the problem. But we're working very hard to make sure that all citizens from all backgrounds get, basically, if they didn't get the information they needed to get a license from the very beginning, because of whatever barriers existed in place, we're going to, we're going to play the giant catch-up game and get them back to square one as everybody else. Um, because to me, that's, that's how we overcome these barriers in place. We just eliminate them one by one and, and make sure that the individuals get the same opportunity at that freedom of, of, of transportation. Because in the metro Detroit area, with the limitations we have for, um, public transportation, you have to have a license. And the reality is now for some of the best jobs, you have to have a license just to apply. And so, we have this sort of, uh, a group of individuals who can't even apply for the best jobs, and they can't get to where they need to go. And so, at least in our communities of Berkeley or Royal Oak, um, that, that sort of reality is unacceptable. And we're doing something on a day-to-day basis to make sure that that change is happening.
We have actually heard from a couple of participants, and probably tongue-in-cheek, but I think there's some truth to it, that they have been told or have heard that if you don't have a license, Royal Oak or Berkeley is the place to go and get caught and get in this program.
[laughing] I love it.
Find the path out, so.
That's great.
But those, but, but those are the questions that need to be asked. What you asked me are the questions that need to be asked. And I, I think it's, it's time for, you know, uh, bodies of government to start answering those questions and in a timely fashion and with answers that make sense. So, we're trying to do it here.
Awesome.
But if you get a chance, watch that link, and you'll see, after my testimony, you'll see there, there's, um, an actual participant in our program who testified in front of Lansing, and then a Detroit community group who talked about some of their realities, um, who testified after me as well, uh, that just talk about just the virtual prison that exists for individuals that don't have a license. And let me just reinforce one last time. This is not about getting bad drivers on the road.
Right.
This is about making sure that individuals who otherwise would be fine drivers, to get them on the road with a valid license, registered vehicles with insurance, that's good for all of us.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, and thanks to you both, uh, for your presentation tonight. I continue to be very impressed with the work of the, of the courts and the, 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 um, ethics and, and morality that you bring to the work that you do. Uh, congratulations on 10-plus years. Uh, and, uh, and again, thank you for joining our team. Uh, you know, Jamie and Robert and Howard have all been really dear friends of mine, and, and I'm grateful to see that the work is continuing. And, and I'm very pleased with the presentation tonight, and encourage folks to, to take your good advice and begin to attend these sessions. And I'm glad to hear, uh, from my colleague that, uh, the sessions are well-received. So, uh, thank you again for, for everything you're doing, and, and thanks for being here tonight.
I just want to add, um, when I did watch, when you invited, it was absolutely amazing, the compassion and empathy that you had. Um, the part that I remember is when you came out of your chamber, somebody was calling in virtually, and the guy just hugged you and, and almost busted out in tears. It's, it's incredible work that you're doing, and, and thank you for doing that for our members of our community.
Thank you. And if you are interested in watching court, we do, anything, anything that's on remote, we do have YouTube links now. So, you can actually log in on YouTube and, and watch court, uh, right from your couch at home. So, anyway, thank you very much for the invitation. And this is my hope, um, as long as, as the invitation remains open, this will be a, a regular update that we provide, just to give you updates on maybe even some trends that we're seeing at the court that you should be aware of, um, things that, that maybe that you'll have an opportunity to respond to for, as a legislative body.
So, um, in closing, I just want to say, I know we've been trying to do this for a while, and it just worked out that tonight was the night, and it, there's, it's also the night of a big football game. But anyway, I just want to say, um, Judge Kane and I had a conversation a while, like when you first were appointed, and we talked about, I mean, we were on the phone for a while. I know it sound hard to imagine, but we talked about restorative justice, and we talked about all, all the things you were saying. I was just like, yes. So, thank you for taking the time with me. Thank you for taking the time with our community. I know both of you to be compassionate jurists, and, um, in the tradition of Jamie Wittenberg, his legacy lives on through both of you and in our communities. Um, my husband is often in front of both of you, and he always comes home and is like, geez, the patience these guys have. And, and I'm like, mm, take a page. I don't know. Um, and just the, um, the way that you practice, the way that you, um, hear cases and respond to people in front of you is respectful and compassionate, but you also give help. You always give something that people can take away so that their situation's better, their life's better, the people around them are better. And I am truly appreciative of the time that you take to do that, because it isn't, to your point, just about doling out punishment. It's really about having an impact on people's lives and the community. So, thank you both for doing that, and from, from, um, you know, starting i- in a place of compassion and, and ruling from your hearts. Um, that is so very important. And yes, we need to do this on a regular basis, because there's so much, so much good that's happening. And if anybody's, you know, at home, uh, you know, not watching, this would be a, a meeting to, um, go to the YouTube channel in a couple of days and really watch it, because it's full of such great information. And I think most people don't know that all of this is going on. And I think that, you know, we need to know. These are, these are wonderful things that are happening in our community and in Royal Oak. And so, I appreciate the partnership. I appreciate your willingness to, to, um, embrace Berkeley and, um, for making us still feel so much a part of things. So, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 124, matter of approving the purchase and installation of various truck-mounted equipment from Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc., utilizing the Mitten Cooperative Bed Contract at a total cost of $99,150 to be split between account numbers 202-464-985-000,
Is there a motion to approve M 0124?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Hannon. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just translating those, that series of numbers you saw, uh, and the motion, uh, that is the major, uh, major local road, well, just major, uh, major road fund, our solid waste fund, as well as our water and sewer fund. These are not, this is not going to be a general fund purchase.
Thank you for making that clarification. Mr. Young?
So, this is the equipment end of a purchase that was made, that came before council several months ago. That was the chassis side of things. This is the equipment side. Originally, this was budgeted under a 101 account. And from that point, we looked at, what is the primary usage of each one of these vehicles? And it makes more sense to purchase those out of the primary account, instead of trying to recoup money from equipment rental back to general fund, just purchase them out of the right account to begin with. Um, so we've got items like the, the 2023 F-550, the chassis is on order. Actually, chassis has been delivered. Um, this would be the equipment side of that. So, that would be the hook lift, the snowplow, um, that would go to the, the road accounts. Um, the 2023 Freightliner 108 SD, that would actually be a cardboard dumpster, which would go to 226, the, um, um, trash accounts, basically, sanitation account. Um, and that would be a, a cardboard dumpster that's enclosed, where residents could come to the DPWR outside of the gate and put their large cardboard in, similar to what we're doing right now at Christmas time. It would be there year-round.
Great.
We recoup quite a bit of money on the cardboard side. It's a, as long as it's sorted and clean, um, it brings back decent return on recycling side, and we'll see those savings through soccer rates.
And it also encourages people to recycle. I mean, if it makes it easy for people to drop their stuff off, that, that's great.
Yeah. And I think a lot of people don't understand, if it doesn't fit in your bin, it gets taken as trash, and we pay for it as trash. It does not get recycled if it's set outside of your bin. So, if you got a large TV, you can bring the box up to DPW. You got to break it down. It's got to go through a slot, put it through the slot. Not only is it recycled, but nobody knows you just got a large TV.
Yeah. Yes.
Good safety.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's a good thing. And ultimately, the goal in the future, not immediate future, in the future, would be have a, a mini recycling area at DPW where residents can come and drop those types of things off. Um, this would be a small step forward to that.
Oh, that's great. I love a good recycling goal. That's great.
And the, um, Ford EL 250, that would go to the water count. That would just be a backup van for meter changes and then lead and water service replacements.
I like that. It's smart and, you know, takes things from the accounts that, to your point, where they, they'll be used.
Yeah. Makes the memos a little wordy when you got all the numbers.
That's okay. That's okay. Overall, it makes really good sense. So, thank you for doing that. Any public comment on this agenda item? Discussion from counsel. Great. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M 0124.
Hannon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Uh, M 0124 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four.
Motion number M 224, matter of approving a proposal from Hubbell, Roth, and Clark for engineering assistance related to the 2024 road rehabilitation project in the amount of $96,285.37. Account numbers 203-464-821-010 and 443-901-821-000 would be utilized to fund this assistance.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve M 0224?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tom Gavin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Black. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, kind of continuing the theme, Madam Mayor. Um, this is, this is also likewise not a general fund, uh, engagement here with Hubbell, Roth, and Clark. This would be our local road program and our infrastructure, uh, millage that was approved by voters in 2018. Those are the two matters by which we'll fund this project. Uh, it came up earlier by email, so I want to note, um, when we use HRC, they are engineer of record, but we do bring the individual projects that we engage with them back to council as an extra layer of accountability, uh, making sure that you're well-aware of the projects that they are working on, as well as the community as well. So, that's why, uh, yes, we have a contract with them, a multi-year contract, but that's why you see so many of these return to council for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
So, this is our, exciting, our, our next phase of our infrastructure projects. Um, remember, previous years, we did concrete road patching all over town. Um, last year was the Wiltshire Project. What we're proposing here is similar to, be like Phase 2, some mortons in to Coolidge, which was milling overlay, which basically grind off sections of road, um, grind off the asphalt and put down a little thinner layer than what we're grinding off, give us a little more curb reveal, do curb, uh, repairs and replacements, not totally replaced, but just areas that are bad. And then the driveway approaches. So, everybody gets a new driveway approach that matches the road.
Got it.
Um, originally, this was a much more robust list. I wanted to have a list of a bunch of streets, and we knew for the next three, four years what we were doing. Um, but with new legislation on lead and copper, it's always changing, and the background, we just researched on how many lead services on each road, a lot of those roads dropped off the list. It just didn't make financial sense to put a new road down, and then five years into it, have to tear it back up again to replace main and services. Um, so these were ultimately picked because of records showing very low lead services. Um, our intention is to go physically verify each one of these sections to make sure we're doing the right thing. Um, but it definitely pared the list down quite a bit.
Sure.
And it was, it was eye-opening to see by our records on some of these streets how many lead services and, and how much that impacts a road project. This isn't a water project. This is a road project.
Right.
But it, it goes across multiple funds.
Okay. Thank you. Any public input? Discussion from counsel. Councilmember Hannon?
Yes. Um, in the city memo, it talks about the deadline being, uh, finishing January, February, and HRC's proposal talks about, um, March, March, April. So, what's the timeline on this?
This would, HRC's proposal is correct. That was my fault. I went to get this to you last month, but with everything dropping off, it moved forward, and I didn't correct them out a long time. Um, I'm still going to squeeze them, try and get them done earlier. We'll have to go with theirs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M 0224.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M 324, matter of authorizing the city manager to approve the contract with McKenna Associates, Inc., to provide building services for trade inspections, non-residential plan review, and code enforcement. Funds from this expenditure will come from account 101-745-822-001.
Is there a motion to approve M 0324?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Director Kaplansky is playing host at one of our, um, first of a series of zoning public information meetings, so she's not able to be with us this evening. Uh, but it's hard at work at a different aspect of her position. Uh, so I'm presenting this to you this evening. Uh, as we've discussed, this is the culmination of a couple of- of a couple of different personnel moves that we have made, starting way back, uh, beginning of this year, when the idea of funding a building official started to take shape. Uh, we were able to do so. We were able to, uh, fill that position, and now that that individual is in place, uh, Berkeley's own, uh, Emily Loomis is our new building official. Uh, we were able to start stepping back our current contract with McKenna. Uh, we, as a, the contract that we've been operating under, uh, McKenna Associates gets seventy-five percent of building permit revenue, uh, over the next, uh, three phases of this. They'll move to seventy percent, forty percent, and ultimately ending at fifteen percent of building revenue and a hundred percent of trade revenue. Uh, so this is an overall savings for the city. Uh, we're, you know, it kind of depends on how permits go, but we're estimating it to be around a hundred and twenty to about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars annually of savings, uh, when it's implemented in the, in a full budget year. But we're very excited about this. It brings this, our, this aspect of our function back in-house. Uh, it gives us somebody who can perform, uh, inspections themselves. As a staff individual, uh, can drive the public service and, uh, service upgrades that we've been looking to make in the Community Development Department. And then also, it's, we have someone on site to act as the relationship manager to McKenna that doesn't take away from the director's, uh, many duties that she already has. So, in total, uh, as the motion states, we would still fund code enforcement, commercial plan review, and then trade inspections, which is why it makes sense to shift this to the trade revenues. But, uh, we are very happy with the work that McKenna has done for us up to this point. I specifically want to highlight Carson Clausen, who has been our, uh, building official, most recently provided to us by McKenna. He is the best of the bunch, uh, and we've been through several. Um, and he has set the standard for how we hired our next, uh, building official in-house. And, uh, we're happy to say he's going to remain with us as the relationship manager, essentially the, the corporate go-between, uh, between our building official and, um, McKenna Associates. So, this is, uh, good all the way around from a fiscal standpoint, from a service standpoint. Uh, very excited to bring this forth for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Uh, public comment? Discussion from council. Councilmember Black.
One question I have, Matt. So, when, because these, these individuals, these contractors have access to our, our network, our systems, are we vetting them, or are we, is, is McKenna vetting, and then we're just kind of taking their word for it?
McKenna does vet them. Uh, we do have safeguards in place on our side that give them limited access to the areas of our system that they can access. Uh, it mostly routes through the BSNA program, and then they've got, um, we can cordon off that, um, that access that way. So, that's how we protect ourselves in that manner with the, uh, trade inspectors and the code enforcement officer.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M zero three twenty-four.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Um, zero three twenty-four has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R one twenty-four, matter of adopting a resolution of the City Council of the City of Berkeley to affirm the boundaries of voting precincts in the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R zero one twenty-four?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten.
Uh, just a quick introduction by way of ragging on our city clerk. Uh, she's remained at the forefront of changes in election law that the state has led and is, uh, able to take advantage of changes now that there is such a plethora of ma- matters by which we vote, uh, with the advent of early voting and AV ballots. Uh, the state made some changes to the, the number of people that are allowed to be within a precinct, and our clerk was right on top of it. Um, and even in the last couple of weeks, had her and her deputy Rachel Patterson have, um, been farther along in implementing this process in the state itself. Uh, it has been no easy task, no small feat by any means, um, but our, never doubt that our, uh, city clerk and her staff are just top-notch. So, uh, with that, I would defer to the clerk.
Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. Um, yes, on December eighteenth, the Election Commission approved redrawing the city's precinct boundaries, which will be in effect for the, um, Tuesday, February twenty-seventh presidential primary election. Um, the purpose of this resolution is to show support and provide a second opportunity to provide the public with information regarding the new configuration. Um, the resolution before you provides a legal standing for this, um, change, along with the rationale. It also outlines the new precincts. And, um, we definitely, I want to say, we thank my staff. This has been quite an undertaking. Um, we appreciate the residents' patience during this transition. Um, we're very excited about the change that this is going to provide in the future for voting accessibility. This will allow us the resources to open up an early voting center in Berkeley here in the council chambers. Um, so our residents will have access to the nine days of early voting in the City of Berkeley, along with no reason absentee voting, and then, of course, on Election Day.
Thank you. Wow. That's a lot. Public input?
Um, sure. I didn't have anything planned.
Oh, okay.
So, my name's Carmen Keer. I've worked a number of elections, so I'll just give props to Victoria. She does a wonderful job. Everything is so organized, labeled, you know, where everything goes, and it's just perfect, and goes off without a hitch. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Discussion from council. Councilmember Hannon.
Um, are we expecting to see any cost savings from the consolidation?
We are. We will see a cost savings. Um, approximately, we will minus about fifteen workers, which would equal about three thousand dollars. Um, we'll also have a decrease in TPW overtime for setup and tear-down. Supplies will be a savings. Um, and then, of course, a, in my budget, we'll see savings. We won't need to purchase two additional e-poll books at seven hundred and seventy-one dollars apiece, um, along with new voting booths at two hundred and eighty dollars apiece. I can cut down on that order. And the biggest cost savings will be with the Touch Rider, um, which was budgeted near ten thousand dollars. So, we won't need to purchase that additional one because we can now use the Touch Rider from, and that's our all-accessible voting machine, from precinct, one of the shuttered precincts.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Vilani?
Uh, so first off, I just want to commend you and your work on this. I know I say it all the time, but, uh, your, the right to vote and our, uh, ability to exercise it is one of the most important rights we have, and I love your commitment to it. For our friends who are, uh, maybe going to watch the replay of this, because they might be watching something else right now, um, I know there can often be questions about, well, why does this voting map look funky? Like, why are all there those shapes and squiggles? And so, could you give just like a, a real high level for anyone looking at this saying, like, why is there a big chunk of number two in number one? So, that they understand the rationale behind that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, there's a number of, um, considerations that go into, um, redrawing the boundaries. Of course, we have, um, federal and state guidelines to follow. But specifically with the City of Berkeley, uh, what we did is we, instead of dividing up the precincts per street, we tried to make it more simple for residents. So, if you voted at City Hall, you now vote at Rogers. So, everyone who voted at City Hall can vote at Rogers. And three and seven, that was an obvious combination because they both vote at the high school. And then we have, um, four and five, which is Angel and the Community Center. So, that was a close proximity. Now, a question some might have, um, we had a resident who came in today wondering why Precinct One couldn't vote at Pat and Go. And the reasoning behind that, that divide is we, the City of Berkeley is divided into two, um, US rep districts. So, to make it, oh, states, thank you. Um, so, the, we wanted to keep those intact. So, crossing over the two districts could provide some confusion, um, at the voting polls for both the voters and the workers. So, it was important to me to maintain that.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
Councilmember Baker?
Well, thank you, Your Honor, and, uh, thank you to you and your team and everyone that's helped, um, uh, make our elections, uh, safe and productive and, and smooth all these many years. Uh, can, kind of continuing along the communication theme, uh, certainly there's been mailings that have been gone, gone out, social media, we've had the letters, we've had the new registration cards and things. What additional, um, communication materials and approaches do we plan to have in place as we approach the, the primary thing coming up, and then as we get towards the, you know, the general in the, in the fall, like signage and mailings and other kinds of things? Could you elaborate on that?
Absolutely. So, I'm working with, um, Communications Director Flora. We have a communications plan moving forward. Um, we will continue using social media, um, and other avenues to communicate this. We just started working today on signs, so we're going to be repurposing some of our sandwich board signs, the large ones, that will have that messaging. Um, you know, you're, you're no longer voting at City Hall, go to Rogers, and of course, a much more succinct way. But, um, yes, we are definitely rolling out a full communications plan.
That's excellent. Thank you. It's in great hands.
Well, Ms. Mitchell, thank you, and your department. I know what a heavy lift this was. I've been watching it happen over the weeks, and, um, I know that you guys have done a great job. It's tight. It's, it's just good. So, thank you for taking this. I'm calling it an unfunded mandate because there are a lot of aspects that, you know, it is. Even though we had some leeway, um, we still, you know, were required to do it. So, thanks for doing it with a smile and, um, doing it so professionally and, and in such an organized way. So, thank you. Um, will you please call the roll on R zero one twenty-four?
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The resolution has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number O one twenty-four, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, amending Chapter forty-six Elections, Article Two Precincts, Section forty-six dash sixteen through forty-six dash twenty-three of the Berkeley City Code.
Is there a motion to approve O zero one twenty-four?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Councilmember Patterson. Mr. Baumgarten.
Madam Mayor, this is a related item, so I'll defer to the city clerk.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell?
Yep, absolutely. This is a housekeeping, um, ordinance, more or less. We are just, um, simply changing out the street names that encompass the precincts.
Great. Public comment? Discussion from council. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on O zero one twenty-four.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The ordinance has passed. And now we are at our communications portion of tonight's meeting. Ms. Mitchell, where do we begin?
Mayor Pro Tem Gavin.
All right.
All right. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, very briefly, uh, Library Board will meet January seventeenth at seven PM at the library, uh, and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board will meet on February eighth at seven PM at the Community Center. And that's it. Short sweep.
Councilmember Vilani?
Uh, just a couple of quick ones as well. The Environmental Advisory Committee is meeting Tuesday, January sixteenth at six-thirty on the second floor of the Public Safety Building with the Berkeley Area Chamber. Their January Chamber Chat is on January nineteenth at Little Lou's Hot Chicken from eight-thirty to nine-thirty in the morning. You can just show up, no need to register. And the February Chamber Chat is February sixteenth at Avenue Real Estate on Twelve Mile. And if you're looking to save some money in the new year, the new twenty-twenty-four Burke perk card is available for only thirty-five dollars at participating businesses and gives you a chance to shop small and save big.
Great.
I just made that up on the fly, by the way, so they should take it.
Why not? Councilmember Patterson?
Uh, the Planning Commission, it will be holding their next meeting on the twenty-third, uh, Tuesday, seven PM here in Chambers. And, um, I might be taking Councilmember Hannon's, uh, from last time, but the workshop for the Steering Committee is ongoing. Um, dates were tonight, uh, seventeen, twenty-fourth, and the thirty-first on different topics, uh, each week. Um, it was well-attended tonight. I was glad I got to go there before the meeting. They're at six PM in the Berkeley High School Collaborative Center.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Madam Mayor, the Committee on Technology and Engagement is very excited as we, uh, as we move forward. So, Director of Communications, um, obviously, uh, will be working with, um, city clerk to, to be a part, to get the word out on the new, um, the new drawing. So, uh, we're very excited about that. And I want to send a shout-out in the, uh, spirit of the proclamation that I read. And, uh, in case anyone doesn't know, Berkeley High School has its first African-American football coach, Casey Humes, who got the job last month. So, um, I know he plans on coming to some future meetings to introduce himself. Really excited for Casey. Had a chance to sit down with him. He's just full of passion, and I think he is the perfect choice to lead our young men to hopefully more victories this year. So, wink, wink, nod, nod.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Hannon?
Yes. Uh, the Tree Board will meet on, uh, Monday, January twenty-second, and everyone should have received their new trees by now, or the replacement if you, uh, had one of those. Uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals meets tomorrow, January ninth, uh, and their case is the auto repair place on, uh, twenty-one fourteen eleven-mile road that are requesting to put a gas station in. And then, uh, yes, most of my thunder was stolen on the, uh, zoning ordinance rewrite.
I left you a little.
But, uh, though one thing I wanted to add, if you do want more information, you can go to the city website at BerkeleyMish.org/zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. Hey, everybody. Um, just wanted to say, uh, Happy New Year to everyone. And, um, the Historical Committee, uh, meets tomorrow, Tuesday, uh, at, uh, seven PM. And they have a new, uh, newsletter that, uh, that's out now, their new quarterly newsletter. And, um, here in January, they have a display of Berkeley, uh, churches. And so, if you have any information or pictures or artifacts or things that you'd like to contribute, um, uh, please bring them in. Um, what they'll do is scan the items and then give them back to you if it's scannable, so that, uh, you know, we can have a digital record of it, and you can click, keep the original. Uh, please visit the museum on Sundays from, uh, two o'clock until four o'clock, and on Wednesdays from ten AM until one PM. And you can always visit them online at BerkeleyHistory.com. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA, meets the very next day, this Wednesday, at, uh, eight fifteen in the morning across the street in the Public Safety Conference Room. And they're setting the course for Fantastic Twenty-four here. And, uh, I'd like to thank everybody on the DDA, all the volunteers and all the businesses, um, and supporters of all the great functions that, uh, the DDA, um, engaged in throughout the year. And we're looking forward to even more, uh, in this great new year to come here. And if you want to get a early scoop on some of those things, please visit them at DowntownBerkeley.com. Uh, and finally, I was Martin Luther King Jr., uh, who once said, "The ultimate measure of a person is not where they stand in moments of comfort, but where they stand at times of challenge and controversy." Uh, in a lot of ways, twenty-twenty-three was a good year. In a lot of ways, it was a very difficult year. Uh, and as we, as a community and as a country, um, approach, you know, this year, there's certainly going to be many opportunities for, for us to, uh, to, to see our measure, right? Uh, lots of things going on. And all I would ask is that folks, please stay informed. Uh, please understand, uh, the issues and the topics that are, that are being discussed and being considered. Uh, please do your homework and research, right? The ultimate responsibility, we talked about earlier with the clerk and the, um, the, the polling precincts, uh, is to be an informed voter, to come in with education, knowledge, and awareness of, of what it is we're voting on and the importance that it has in our society. So, uh, so thank you for that. Uh, it's going to be an awesome year. I'm really looking forward to it. And one way that you can all can help, uh, make this year super great is to please hug somebody you love. Um, we lost someone recently that, um, that was, uh, kind of unexpected as well. And, um, you know, you never know. So, um, don't take any day, any day for granted. Um, and be safe, enjoy, and let's make each day count. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, it's unique that we're meeting on the second Monday of the month, uh, but the first and the fifteenth are both holidays for the city, uh, so we will not be meeting again for the month of January. We'll be, our next meeting will be the February fifth. Uh, likewise, we'll have one meeting that month as well. Uh, so we will not meet again until February, uh, with winter, with snow in the forecast. We can get anywhere from half inch to four feet, uh, between now and then. So, just, uh, advocate for anybody to review sort of their winter safety plan, make sure they're aware of what they would do, uh, should the worst come. Um, you know, and let's hope that doesn't happen. Um, and then, other than that, I'll just close by saying, go blue and go Lions.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Staran?
Thank you. Uh, I'll be brief because I know everybody wants to, uh, get home to watch some educational program, uh, one of our major universities. Happy New Year to everybody. Uh, good to see you all and to be seen. Uh, just very briefly, I just want to, uh, thank you all and express my gratitude for your understanding and patience over the last few weeks as I've been dealing with. as I've been dealing with and continue to deal with the serious family health crisis that has arisen, and I appreciate all your kind thoughts and prayers. They're all needed and much appreciated. And with that, go Blue.
Thank, it's nice to see you this evening, John. Thank you. I will be brief, but I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Mayor Maybel Frazier, who passed away last month. Council will be doing a more robust acknowledgement of her passing next month. But Maybel was the first woman to serve as mayor of the City of Berkeley, paving the way for not only Marilyn Stefan, but for me as well, and I am grateful to her for that. I didn't know Maybel, so I, I mean, I knew of her. We exchanged pleasantries. But I do know that she led with her heart, and she was very proud of the City of Berkeley. She was proud that it was her home. She raised her family here. She had a deep commitment to the City of Berkeley. She served on many boards and committees. And she was a champion for girls and women. She worked hard to provide opportunities for young girls, particularly in sports. And she was, I guess the one thing that I admire about her was just her commitment to the things that she believed in. And she was a true role model. She led with care and compassion, and I appreciate her paving the way. And I just want, may she rest in peace and go Blue. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Baker. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The Monday, January 8th, 2024, meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned. Is it?
Who's got the seven?
Yeah. Good or bad seven, yeah.